Financial assistance effective January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five at five P M. Exceptions may be granted by O M B on a case by case basis. Agencies are required to submit information on any program subject to this policy, O M B, by February tenth, twenty twenty five. The memorandum explicitly states that it does not apply to Medicare, Social Security benefits, or any direct assistance provided to individuals best by the Emory. So they represent the city, Squire Patton Boggs, in Washington, D C, as our federal government relations firm. One of the things that we're discussing as mayors is potentially challenging disorder. It has the potential to disrupt a lot of services and projects that people utilize every day. So there's question going on right now at the national level. Can the executive order usurp Congress's legal appropriation powers to disperse federal money? That is up in the air right now, so we'll update you as soon as we get some information back on it, but we do not plan just to kind of wait for this. There's active feedback going on right now to determine, is it legal, number one, to usurp Congress's appropriation of dollars? And then, two, what is the recourse for us in so many of these programs that will impact in various communities of all sizes across this country? So as soon as I get that, I'll send something out to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the question.
Mr. President, quick question.
Mr. Semest.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, now that it's the new year, one of the questions that I've been getting from some of our business owners, and we referenced the whiskey tax, is if in this year, we could look at a way to start digitizing that collection. Currently, we've got a paper form, and we still have to submit paper checks and mail those off to a P O box. I'm not saying that we're losing out on some collections, but there's obviously that potential. And I think, you know, just for the business community in general, it would be a huge help for us to really focus in, kind of get that up to, you know, where we're in a digitized world, so.
Yeah, that has been brought to us before, and I know you and some other councilmen have mentioned that, too. We're looking into software. I don't think that we made a purchase on that. We made a purchase on that? You want to speak to it?
We are in the process of swapping over to a new software at some point, hopefully this year. We've been kind of delayed due to trying to get all the records moved over back and forth, and the hope is that eventually, maybe by later in the year, next year, we'll be able to do online payments and stuff.
All right, thank you. Before we move on to the first item, Madam Clerk, I recognize Mr. Andre Thomas, which is on Congressman's figures team. He sent an email based on the question that you asked, and I'll share it with the council and maybe on our fourth or one hour meeting in February to get you to come back and kind of talk us through on this other thing. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. All right, Madam Clerk, any special committees to report? All right, we had asked leadership when Montgomery come speak to the council, but I don't see her here today, so we'll just move that to our first meeting in February, because we're trying to move on out today for the mayor's State of the City address. Okay, item one, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, consent agenda, I have withdrawn item four. It did not meet the criteria of requiring council agenda approval, so four units, items one, two, three, one, two, and three for the council's approval.
All right, any question from the council? Any motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, consent agenda is approved, is presented. Item five, hearing on proposed ordinance amending Appendix C zoning article six, general provisions, smart code.
Okay, Ms. Smith.
Warren Adams, Land use control administrator. We are proposing an amendment to smart code to include a definition for public art. This is really the first step in addressing artworks throughout the city and trying to move towards some sort of review process. At the moment, only public art is allowed, and this definition clarifies exactly what public art is and who can install it and where it can be installed.
Okay, and you guys had a public hearing with the planning commission, as recommended by the planning commission?
It was, yes.
Okay, so we need a vote on this right here. Need a motion to adopt?
You need to have, you need to hold a public hearing, Mr. President.
All right, all right, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, declared a public hearing, has been here as proper for the council. Any motion?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
All right, thank you.
Item six, ordinance requiring council's adoption of resolution or ordinance in order to request legislative laws or any amendments pertaining to the city of Montgomery, its citizens or personnel.
Withdrawn it. Withdraw.
Okay. And counsel, I had put before you, item one was advertently left off, Mr. Pruitt's ordinance enforcing the laws of the state of Alabama that prohibit certain persons from possessing or owning firearms.
Mr. President.
Mr. Pruitt, I'm gonna put that in public safety committee, Ms. Brenda, and I'll get with you. We can see here tomorrow, we'll set a time up and call the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, is that?
Mr. Pruitt, didn't we just bring this out of the public safety committee?
No, this is the new one.
Well, we brought it out of committee. Yeah.
We brought the old one out of committee.
We didn't have, we didn't have one. It was the anonymous.
Yeah, it was the anonymous one.
I was trying to help you, you brought it out of committee.
No, this is, this is the brand, y'all trying.
So what, what will we change?
This is the brand new one. We're gonna put it in committee. This is the one that I mentioned to the mayor, that I would probably like to invite the Attorney General's office, I'd like to invite the D A's office, I would like to invite all the players in this thing to figure out, you know, is this the right ordinance or not?
It is gonna be the wrong ordinance if we're gonna invite all those players.
Well, that's what I'd like to do.
It's gonna be the wrong ordinance.
That's what I'd like to do.
All right, I mean, I think it's going to committee to die, so.
No, I, I mean, I've been.
Okay, that's fine, Madam Clerk, we'll put it in the public safety committee.
Mr. President.
Who's on that committee?
Public safety.
Myself, Ed, and Glenn, and Rodney.
All right. Mr. President.
Mr. Mitch.
Mr. Vice President, can we go ahead and set a tentative date, please?
And do for the next council meeting, Ms. Brenda.
No, sir, you'll have to let me get with the calendar.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item seven, resolution extending the deadline for renewal of business license. Do you want me to handle that as a Scrivener's correction, changing it to February the twenty first rather than February the fourteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, it's probably for the council with the date of February the twenty first.
All right, council, need a motion to suspend rules.
Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, the ordinance, the resolution is adopted with the correction of the deadline being February the twenty first.
All right, Ms. Bebe, collect, collect, collect.
Hey, I got one.
Mr. President. Item eight.
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Beard.
Can I just ask a question on that, please?
Yes.
I've received numerous phone calls about the process of what is happening down at twenty five Washington, and I know y'all sent everything out, email for them to get everything in line, but is there any way we can send out the directives, exactly what they need to do, the time that they need to be there, updating when the new date's gonna be, because they've heard first, fourteen, now twenty first, or whatever? Just something like, hey, this is one, two steps, because I've gotten ten phone calls today. I'm nervous about not knowing what to do.
Since the council has agreed to extend the deadline by additional three weeks.
Yes, sir.
I will get with our staff to get the department that controls the website, and we'll update the website on that, so we can.
Okay, and then possibly maybe emailing all those businesses, just like y'all did the forms?
We're talking several thousand businesses here, those that haven't renewed. We put it out there on the website for them, and, you know, we can give them instructions, we can, if they call in or email in, we can direct them that way.
Well, Mr. President and Councilman Beard, I think, I think the thing that we're trying to clarify is that, and I talked to, I had a business owner call me today as well, about the calls and the voicemails that are being left and then not hearing back, so if the directive needs to be, you have, if you do not have a business license yet, you have to come in person, then we have to put that out, that, because the cards say, call. And I think the calls that Julie, or Ms. Beard is getting, and that I'm getting, are, and Glenn's, you know, everybody else is getting them, is that they're not getting the calls back, and one of the ones that I got today, yeah, where the phone's not getting answered. So if they're just, if we need to update what we're saying publicly, then say, people have to come in and do it in person, if that's how we're having to do it.
Counsel, let me address this, if you don't mind. We've worked out something where we're having the staff that we have on board now, and we're probably ten people down at this point, okay? And folks outside as well, but I'm having the staff, somebody's taking two hours, eight to ten, to make calls, to return these calls, then the next person does the same thing, and they've been given approval to work overtime to do their regular work if they can't get it done during the day, okay? I'm getting those emails and calls as well. I'm sorry you all haven't do it, but I'm getting the same thing. And, yeah, and it's Blaylock, and we're addressing those as quickly as we possibly can. So, I may ask, is it possible for our communications department to possibly put something out to say, hey, the deadline has been extended without penalty? Is that okay, Mayor?
It is.
Okay, and that's probably the best we can do, because if we take time to try to send out notifications at this point in time, it's only gonna slow them down, and we've got long lines as it is, with fewer people to handle masses, okay?
Ms. Bebe, we got a few blocks she was up here, so they'll come answer some calls for you in two hours.
Thank you so much.
No additional pay. Thank you, Mr. Semest. Ms. Beard, Ms. Riley, appreciate your support.
We make that work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next item.
Item eight, resolution for nightmare towing and recovery at forty four eleven Norman Bridge Road to add auto repossession to their business license.
All right, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Bennett here, have someone to speak, and Miss Epsir come speak on item number eight.
Good evening, counsel. Good evening. Angela Exel, South Johnson Neighborhood Association. This particular site at forty four eleven has been a issue for over ten years. It has now been overcome with vehicles that are right at the line of Norman Bridge Road. There was a car accident a couple of months ago where one of the cars was too far out in the roadway. We need some compliance. This particular site also had an abatement for nine, three, of twenty four, for those junk cars that's been on the property. We haven't seen any of them moved. We have multiple complaints with snakes and rats coming from under the vehicles because they've been there for almost ten years. We have timestamped photos, we have a whole binder on this particular site of what it looked like years ago, what it looks like now, and we have provided that to code enforcement too as well, so they have that binder. We just need some action. We just need code enforcement to follow through with that abatement from nine, twenty three, twenty four. Those vehicles need to go. We have an elderly lady that lives, that her property backs up to the backside of that property, and she have to look for snakes every time she goes out there, and we're afraid for her. We really are afraid for her. So I want the council to empathize with her and our community as a whole. It's time to clean it up. It's time to clean up that street so that we can have a better vision coming in, because it looks so bad, and it's also dangerous.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Tate.
Again, good afternoon, counsel. We really need to sit down and talk about this. This is not necessarily dealing with the agenda item per se, but it's dealing with the comments that are being made. Code enforcement is doing the job, okay? I think the issue that's being described has touched another department that we need to coordinate this with, and we'll be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tate. You gotta work it out, but at this point, I'm not, well, Mr. Mitch, I need a motion to suspend rules.
Motion to suspend rule.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to deny.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is denied. Item nine, application for an alternative transportation service during business, Sunshine Medical Transportation Service, nine, South Hart Drive.
Representative for Sunshine Medical Transportation, President, please come forward. Oh, you say we carry it?
Yeah, we're gonna carry it.
All right, we're gonna carry this item.
Carry this over. Item ten, resolution reappointing Barry Glazer Robinson to the Board of Adjustment.
Ms. Johnson.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the rule for this item and the rest of the agenda.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Expeditions.
Unanimous.
Need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item eleven, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of improvement of public nuisances on various lots.
Anyone in order to speak to this on item eleven, any abatements? Seeing none, need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right, have anything?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, there's a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with T O A L L C for two hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars for the governor's house demolition.
All right, need a motion to suspend the rules?
I suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Yeah!
Unanimous.
Need a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
When they starting?
They already started. Get your hands up. Thank you, appreciate you guys, thank you.
Yeah, God. I know it's thirty years.
And channel twelve was gone, guys, we might get it down.
Mr. Pruitt, you wanna do this?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Resolution of a permanent nature, authorizing mayor to execute guarantee agreement related to DIP financing for Jackson Hospital and Clinic Incorporated.
Mr. President, we're gonna carry this over, and I understand there's a meeting in the morning at nine thirty and.
Yes, meeting in the morning at nine thirty to discuss the Jackson Hospital piece.
Okay.
All right, so, all right, any council?
This is carried over to Friday.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I was gonna reconvene it, we're gonna carry this over till Friday.
Friday at four o'clock rather than to February the fourth. Yes, sir. Okay, counsel, I have one request for contingencies, this for District Two, for seven hundred and fifty dollars for resurrection Catholic mission for fund day, seven hundred and fifty dollars, sir.
Ms. Blaylock, Mr. President, I have something to add. Apologize for the delay. Uptown Neighborhood Association, fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Duchess Divas and Gents, fifteen hundred.
Just a second. Duchess Divas and Gents.
Fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Neighborhood Services, this is for the mayor's banquet, twelve hundred.
I didn't understand you.
For Neighborhood Services for the Bears banquet, twelve hundred.
Neighborhood Services for the banquet?
Yes, ma'am.
Twelve hundred?
Yes, ma'am. Leadership Montgomery, three thousand. Percy Julian High School, one.
Wait a minute, three thousand Leadership Montgomery, okay, and Percy Julian?
Percy Julian High School, one thousand, and this is specifically for the C B I program.
For the?
C B I program.
C B I program.
How long you?
What happened?
All right.
Ms. Blaylock, I got five thousand dollars to Lagoon Park Trail.
Lagoon Park Trail?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Blaylock, District Two, seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty to the C B I program, Percy Julian.
To what?
The C B I program at Percy Julian.
Oh, okay.
For their prom, for the C B I program.
Okay, seven hundred and fifty, okay.
All right, anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry, just, just one presentation. Somebody came late, and they weren't late, but we just had to mix up on the time before you adjourned.
Okay, okay, got you. All right, Ms. Pruitt.
Mr. President, I need one thousand dollars to that same program as Julie. That's for Julie, that's for Q V?
Yeah, the C B I program.
Yeah, she done got all the, Charlie done already.
They're seventeen fifty, we're doing Percy Julian.
All right, one, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Pruitt.
No, scratch mine then, scratch mine.
Yeah, you told she.
It's called up by mistake messages, that's pretty smart.
They're gonna have real knife roll on y'all, man.
Mr. President, Mr. Mitch.
They all coming to the mayor's National Night Out, yes.
Ms. Blaylock, I have one, one thousand dollars to Police Athletics Lead of Montgomery.
Okay, that's a new one, I'll have to check that one.
All right, that's Powell.
That's Powell.
All right, Ms. Semest. Ms. Blaylock, District Seven, I need five thousand dollars for M G M Runs, R U N S.
M G M Runs?
Runs, yeah, M G M Runs, R U N S.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, last one, District Five, fifteen hundred dollars to Neighborhood Services for the mayor of Montgomery for District Five, and two thousand dollars for Leadership Montgomery. All right, need a motion.
One, one.
Oh, oh, Ms. Mayor.
Yes, Dr. Keisha Bailey, the Energy Specialist for the City of Montgomery, wants to make a special presentation, come up and share it with us.
Let's go ahead and make a motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, thank you. Ms. Bailey?
Thank you, Mayor Reed, city council members, citizens of Montgomery, as well as employees on behalf of Synergistic Savings Company. We want to congratulate you for twenty five Washington being awarded the Energy Star Award for this year. In the last calendar year, the city has saved one million dollars as a result of energy conservation efforts because of the efforts of our employees working alongside synergistics. For the total life of the program, we have been able to save over eight million dollars, so we just want to say thank you, Mayor Reed, thank you, city council, and thank you employees for helping us become better stewards of the taxpayers' dollars.
Good. Thank you, thank you.
They want to get a picture, sorry about that.
Picture.
They want to get a picture or get an account.
Every saving council around here.
Hey, Kippy, let the folks turn the lights back on on Washington now. Quit working in the dark down there.
All right, look at the camera.
And you go one more over?
Yeah, move over.
There we go. All right, great, ready, three, two, one, one, two, three, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, man.
That turned out. Nine thirty, okay, y'all got it? Yeah, we got it, we got it.
Is that for everybody? Or is yours doing?
No, if you come, no, listen.
You got ten, all right.
We, Mrs. Glenn, Charlie, Andy, if you want. All right, thank you. All right, any council have anything else? Okay, just a reminder of the, the State of the City address is tonight at six P M. at the Montgomery Museum of Fine Arts.
Shakespeare Festival.
Shakespeare Festival, Shakespeare Festival.
Is it heavy hors d'oeuvres? Is it heavy hors d'oeuvres for us?
Is it heavy hors d'oeuvres for us?
Uh, yes, heavy hors d'oeuvres, bring your own brown bag, man.
Okay.
I'm trying to be a happy man, everything.
All right.
I better get my apple.
At 6 o'clock. Uh, the reception, Mayor, the reception is from 5 to 5:30?
The reception, open house starts at 5, then 5:30, and then 6 o'clock is when we start the.
All right, and the council reception is at City Hall at 5:30?
What? Not City Hall.
No, I'm just playing.
How long are you talking, Mayor? I got an HOA meeting here, too.
All right, anything else? Thank you for the love of the room, this meeting. Oh, no, 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 no. We're recessing this meeting to 4 o'clock on Friday, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Got you.
We stand in recess.